Of the zoning board of appeals meeting, I'm going to go around and introduce our board members and also get a microphone check from them. I will also go out to each application and ask for a microphone check from each one of the people presenting. The public is allowed to comment. I won't ask for a microphone check at this time, but when the case comes up, you will be heard and you can chime in at that point. Becky Kilborn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Our clerk, Mr. Ken Scholes.
Yeah.
Jeff Sauer.
Right here.
And our alternate who will be sitting in on all of our cases tonight is Corinne Doherty.
Here.
Thank you, Corinne. And from the planning department, we have our director, Mr. David Fields.
Present.
And Georgia Prendergast.
Present.
Very good. Thank you, guys. And can I have somebody check in on 152 Endicott Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Rob Hewitt.
Thank you, Rob. And 51 Needham Road.
This is Nancy McCann. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. 19 Robert Road.
Yes, sir, we are here.
And you are?
Brian and Rachel Novello.
Sorry, I didn't get a name on that one.
Brian and Rachel Novello.
Thank you, Brian. And 6 Elgonquin Road. It doesn't look like there's anybody here on Elgonquin. And David, I guess before we get started, I'll go out to you. Did they ask for a continuance?
They did. Technically, it was an incomplete filing. They needed further relief that they hadn't applied for, so.
Okay, so we'll bring that up. You know what, Ken, we'll bring that one up first and get it out of the way and do a continue on that. All members, you were in receipt of a minutes for our last meeting. And if I could get, if there's no further discussion, if I could get a motion and a second.
So moved.
And seconded by Jeff Sauer. I'll go with a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And John Bounder is also a yes. And Mr. Clerk, if you could read our introduction from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. This open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is affordable, afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals is convening remotely via the WebEx app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And I believe that's it. I will just, for people that are new to our process, when your case is called by the clerk, we'll ask you to present your information and your application. At that point, I will put it out to the zoning board members for questions. Once we finish with our questions, we'll go out to the public for comment. After public comment, we will come back to the zoning board of appeals for deliberation. We ask not to be interrupted at that point. And from there, you'll get an idea on if you have the votes or not to pass what you're looking to get through. I do ask that if you are not speaking and you're not participating, that you do mute your microphone as so we are not interrupted. And with that said, Mr. Clerk, if we could start with 6 Elgonquin, and we will get that continued.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case, 6 Elgonquin Road, Sarah Laporto, docket 21-4938. She requests to be continued to June 14 meeting.
I have a motion for a continuance. Can I get a second? I've got a second by Jeff Sauer. I'll go with a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And John Bounder is also a yes. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if we could go to our one and only continued case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First one is 152 Endicott Street. This is Zone C3. Request for a use in dimensional variance to redevelop the property into a four-story multifamily building with 192 residential units and a four-story accessory parking garage in accordance with Section 6.1 and Table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws made by Dilip Realty LLC, docket 20-4886.
Thank you. I know we've got a lot of material here, and in interest of moving this along, I would like to just focus on anything that's new. This case has been around since last fall. I think we're all pretty familiar with it. I'm not trying to short circuit your presentation here, but I would like to keep it to just new material. So with that said, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will attempt to just keep it to the new material. As the board recalls, we outlined our revised proposal, which included a number of items that the board and others had requested, including an increased affordability of our unit count, a reduction in height, and relooking at signage. The board had asked for additional materials to illustrate that redesign at our last hearing, and we submitted those last week in a comprehensive package. But also restated our entire request for variances, which, as you recall, had reduced from an initial ask of 14 variances. Now confirming, we're asking for eight variances. There was, there was one parking setback variance in question the last time that I said our team would investigate, and we did confirm that we no longer need that variant. So I think it would be useful if I'll just briefly go over a few of the materials we submitted, since they directly speak to some of the questions from the board last time.
Mr. Hewitt, are you able to screen share any of this that you can put up at the same time?
Yeah, I can do that now.
Very good. Thank you.
Bear with me while I get the right plan up. Can the board see this plan clearly?
I can.
Thank you. So this is the revised bulk and dimensional site plan that accompanied our application. I just wanted to point out a few things to illustrate the redesign that I explained at the last hearing. If you can see my cursor, what we're calling the Endicott Wing, this, this wing within this dimension is about 135 feet from Endicott Street, and this dimension here is 160 feet. So roughly 140 to 160 feet from Endicott Street, the building will be four stories, which results in a smaller looking building, and I will also show you the rendering in a moment. The second part of the building, we're calling the River Wing, which is this rear section facing the river. That remains at five stories. The parking garage, which is enclosed by the building now on roughly three sides, as you may recall, before it sort of jutted out on its own, now it's mostly enclosed by the building and not very visible. That is, is roughly at the same four-story height as the Endicott Wing. So this section of the building, the garage, are at four stories height-wise, and this rear wing and this extension is at five stories. You can also see the additional surface parking that we added between the building and the riverfront area where we have landscaping that I described last time. And we now have a complete 360 road around the building to help with fire access and We have made progress with our retail abutter, and Attorney McCann, I know, is online and can speak to our progress if, if requested by the board. They have provided us with a plan that improves the circulation and truck access from their retail. We have no objection to their plan, and we're currently just finalizing the details of that plan and working on a memorandum of agreement with the abutter to document the work that we'll be doing. The, the changes to Shawley Court, there's a few changes. These two intersections into the parking lot that I'm highlighting, the abutter has requested that we block those off with a solid landscape wall and that a new circulation path in about this area. That will help with the queuing as people get out of the shopping center and come out of our property, and it will also help them with their truck access. So I will now switch to the renderings, which illustrate this in 3D form unless anyone has any specific questions on this plan.
No, I think that's fine. Go right ahead.
All right. So this, again, is the site plan top-down, showing the Endicott Wing at four stories, the garage at four stories, and the five-story section in the rear of the property, the surface parking, Shawley Court access. This is just a summary that I provided for the board's use that shows the current proposal versus what we originally proposed and the differences. This first view is looking along Shawley Court and the entry drive, as you can see in this little view angle in the bottom right-hand corner. And so you're seeing the main entry, which with the five-story wing at the rear of the property, stepping down to four stories as it gets towards Endicott Street. This next slide, which is a little smaller, but provides a comparison of the two renderings that we have provided to this board originally, four, five stories for the entire building. To the right, the five stories that steps down to four stories. We also reduced the project signage. The two signs we are showing in our current application both meet the current regulations, and we will not require any variances for what we are proposing. In addition, last time, we discussed the two existing signs, which are grandfathered. We do not want to use them, and we will release our rights to those grandfathered signs, you know, upon approval, if we're approved on this project, just to clarify that signage The second view is from Endicott Street, right as you're getting off the highway, heading into Danvers along Endicott Street. You can see the four stories along the road, and you can just see a corner of the five-story building as it peaks up about 150 feet into the property. The next slide shows a comparison of the two renderings that we've shown. Here, you can see the five stories for the whole building, which is now just the rear, which you can see at this corner, and it steps down to four stories along the road. We also changed the signage. We had a larger oversized variance sign sticking out from the building to provide additional views from each direction. We've reduced that to a single code compliance sign on the building that doesn't require a variance. The third view is as you're racing along the highway, looking left over the bridge and the water at the building. This is the proposed five-story building in the rear. Previously, we had the parking garage, as you can see on this spot, sticking out as a buffer between the building and the, and the highway. Now that the garage is mostly wrapped by the building, you don't see the garage from this view along the highway. Last time, there's, we had a lot of discussion about heights and equipment that extended above the roof line, getting into how the height was defined. So we tried to exhaust, exhaustively provide all the details on how height is measured, both from the proposed future grade and the existing grade of the current site. I also showed our typical mechanical equipment, which I verified will be used for this development. It ranges from three foot to three and a half feet above the roof line, mostly for mechanical condensers on the building, and then at the garage, the stairwell will extend up above the roof line as shown. The Danvers regulate, regulations allow for 12 feet above the roof line for mechanical equipment as a, as an allowance for a height overrun, and we won't be using, we'll only be using about a third of that. So this, again, shows the heights of the different parts of the building for the board's I already spoke to the signage, but just briefly, we included this plan, even though it's not needed any longer, since we're not asking for any variances. But we've had so much discussion on signage, I included it, showing the one sign on the building face facing Endicott Street, and then the one freestanding sign, monument sign at the building and entry, both of which will be sized so they meet the regulations. We also submitted an updated traffic memo that just shows the differences, the reductions from the reduced unit count. And I do have Scott Thornton from Benass Associates here, in case the board had any questions on his memo or any remaining traffic questions. I also have our attorney, Tim Sullivan, here to answer any questions on the variances or our application. And finally, our civil engineer, Brian McCarthy, who's worked with the town departments and, and the team to design the site, is available as well in case there are questions. So with that, I think that summarizes the differences since we last were in front of the board and outlines the materials we submitted, and I will stop talking and turn it over to the board.
Very good. Thank you very much. It seems like it's a very detailed update, Mr. Hewitt. So with that said, I will start down there with you, Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the applicant for spending time and listening to our comments and providing additional information. I wanted to, could you just clarify on the parking? How many parking spaces are in the garage, and how many parking spaces are surface?
Yes, I can do that. We have 266 parking spaces in the garage and 50 on the surface. And as I indicated in my letter, we've allocated 20 spots for visitor parking, which we found is a comfortable number for this side of the project, and those will be located in the surface lot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. On the Shawley Court, could you just, I know you explained it a little bit, but could you, like briefly, if you're coming off of Endicott Street, just describe what those different breaks are there?
Different arrows and lanes?
So you said there's going to be like a berm or a fence or something along the, facing the shopping center? Is that?
Yes, and I, I can show the kind of working plan that we're talking with the abutters.
That'd be great. That'd be great. It's hard to envision, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just caution that we haven't completely agreed to this with the abutter, but this is what we have been discussing with them. So it's similar to the plan we were just looking at in that there's two lanes in off of Endicott Streets and two lanes out. There'll be a little bigger turning radius to allow for trucks and the fire trucks to make the turn safely from the lane. And the abutters asked for a larger landscaped island to more clearly delineate which way people are going in and out, and we think that's a great idea. And then what I was just speaking to, this long green landscaped area, which previously had two cuts to allow people to get in and out of the bank from the retail lot. The circulation requested by the abutter was to kind of block that off so that folks who are exiting or entering have to come in from the right, and that allows a longer queue length at this traffic light and also access into and out of the bank. We've also added some pedestrian circulation coming from our property and directing people into the retail center safely.
And are there sidewalks there for people to walk?
We're showing the sidewalk on our site plan, and then this plan continues that sidewalk up to the bank, and also we'll have at least one or maybe two crosswalks. We're still looking at the correct location of those to get people across Shawley Court and into the retail center in case they choose to walk from our property and use the retail center.
Okay. That looks, it looks much better. Thank you. Okay, the, so the lot size is about 4.3 acres, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how much of that is wetland? Do you have an estimated either percentage or square feet?
That's a, that's a great question. I'll just, I'll ask our civil engineer, Brian McCarthy, if he has that information handy. We have, as I've reported before, talked with the Conservation Commission, but we have not yet filed with them. The main piece of the wetland is this, is a drainage ditch that leads to the Waters River, kind of where we'll be crossing with Shawley Court, and then there is some wetland adjacent to the riverfront area. Brian, if you're on the line, do you have any numbers on the amount of buffer zone or wetland area?
Yes, this is Brian McCarthy with RJ O'Connell Associates Civil Engineers. Yeah, so it's approximately about a half an acre of wetland area.
Half an acre? So you're a little under four acres of usable site?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the signs, I mean, I, if you're going to take the signs down and you're going to do by right, I guess if you have a problem, you'll have to come back to us, but I'm assuming that you'll put up what's allowed, so I'll, I'll say that that's it and move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky. Ken Scholes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you, could I ask a question of Attorney McCann?
Sure.
Attorney McCann, how is your communication going with your client in Dilip Realty?
We have had a meeting, we had a meeting last week to discuss the plan that Mr. Hewitt put up was actually a plan that our traffic engineer came up with in order to get pedestrians from the multifamily project safely into the commercial area. However, we have not, I must say, we have not reached agreement. There are issues that with regard to the traffic mitigation that arise as a result of the density of this project that we have to deal with, because the plan that you see in front of you that was submitted by the applicant does not work from a traffic standpoint as far as the direct abutters, being the shopping center, the bank, McDonald's as well, it does not work. However, we are in discussions to come up with something that might work, and the plan that was put up, there is, by the way, there is no wall and there is no fence. I believe Ms. Kilborn asked about the, a fence or a wall. There, there's no wall or fence being proposed in that area, and the plan that was, that we are discussing requires an easement from my clients to make it work because of the way Shawley Court is laid out and how it intersects with the signalized intersection. It does not work. It does not allow for the truck vehicle movements that need to be made into the shopping center, et cetera. So, yes, we are in discussions. We hope that things will, will move forward, but we're not there yet, and I think it's very important that we be there and that you have a plan in front of you before you take any action that shows how the traffic is going to work, because the impact on these longstanding commercial uses is very significant from, from this project. And so we need, we need to make sure that it works. So that's where we are. We're in discussions, but we're still awaiting comments back from them. They're awaiting comments from us. We're going back and forth.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you. Couldn't agree with you more. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff Sauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions have just all been answered, so I'll move on.
Very good. And Corinne? Corinne, are you on?
I'm sorry, I thought I had unmuted. I just have a few questions. With regard to conservation, going in front of the Conservation Commission, if, if I'm looking correctly at the map that is still on the screen, it looks as if the road crosses over conservation land. Is that true, or am I not seeing this correctly?
Yes, there's a, there's a drainage ditch that's mapped as a wetland roughly where my cursor is. We will be bridging over that with a box culvert or similar structure, and the area of disturbance is less than the threshold, so that is allowed by the regulations, and it's one of the items we discussed informationally with the Conservation Commission.
Okay. And right now, Shawley Court is still considered a paper road, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a town right-of-way that's unconstructed, so yes, that's a, a paper road.
That is all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Mr. Hewitt, what, so what is the threshold for Conservation Commission involvement? I'm guessing it's some number, correct?
I believe, and my team can correct me if I'm wrong, anytime we impact a wetland resource area or a buffer zone, I'm required to go to the Conservation Commission for an order of conditions. There is an allowable square footage that's allowed to be disturbed, that the Conservation can grant us an order of conditions over. So that's what I was referring to, we're within that threshold that the Conservation Commission can grant.
Let me, let me go out to Georgia Prendergast. And Georgia, what, what is that number? What is that threshold? I thought it was 500 square. What is that threshold? I thought it was 500 square feet. Is that right?
No, so that threshold is dependent on the amount of impervious and it's a detailed calculation based on the actual project, so it is.
So it's like a formula based on size and?
Exactly, based on size and location.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hewitt, what other commercially zoned areas in Danvers currently have residential property on them or multifamilies on them?
I know through discussions with the town planning staff that there is at least one other multifamily building that through a use variance like this. I don't recall the name of the project and I would ask anyone to call from the planning staff, perhaps.
Okay, I can go to David, Mr. Fields. David, would you know, is there an address you can give us?
You're looking specifically for commercial properties with multifamily on them? I mean, there's quite a number.
Commercially zoned land that now has multifamily and/or residential property on it.
There's quite a.
That this kind of relief has been granted to.
Specifically with use variances, I'm not sure with your case file well enough, but I know just from doing mapping work that there's quite a number. You have some right up the street at 114 Sylvan Street. There's certainly quite a few and obviously anything in the highway corridor zone that's multifamily. There's a number up there, too.
Mr. Chairman, I think where Swing Away Golf was on Route 1 southbound, I believe the complex behind Stop &amp; Shop was all commercial land.
Okay, yeah, I remember that one. Conifer Hill, you're talking about? Okay, I think that's all I've got. Now, I guess the last question I'll have for you, Mr. Hewitt, you know, it's been detailed a few times now. You know, and again, we're going on more than eight months that this case has been before us, that the intersection with Chalet Court and Endicott Street is problematic without this project. I know the abutters been involved, as you both detailed tonight, with trying to come up with a plan. But it just seems like we're really inching along slow. Is this? I'm in a perfect world. How do you make something with this number of units work at this location? If you had your way and didn't have to have the abutters approval here, how would you make this work?
Well, we've been attempting to work with the abutter for at least a year and a half. Once Attorney McCann got involved recently, there's been tremendous progress due to her marshalling this through this sort of complicated ownership on the other side. A lot of parties involved in the decision-making. So until recently, we had been asking over and over, you know, how they use their retail and how we could best address that and integrate our two uses. We had no feedback until we submitted and we're in this process with you. Since then, we've been talking as has been described. So we came up with a plan that we felt worked and we worked with the town staff who was looking out for the retail abutters as far as they could tell in terms of providing similar access. So we did our best. We came up with a plan that worked for us in that we had to provide access through that light at Endicott Street and we wanted to make it as safe and logical for all the users of that intersection. So I do think the plan that the abutter has presented to us has improved upon that because it gives us more data on how they want to use it. And so I apologize that it has taken so long. We have been at it for quite a while and really pushing. And I think we're getting close in that we have a plan in front of us that we generally agree with and that works for our use. So that's a long way of saying we want access at the light because the current access to this property, as you know, was only right in, right out and was only a temporary access and it's not the legal access for that parcel. So we feel like the best and the only access for us is at that existing traffic light.
Okay, I think that answers my question. I don't have any additional questions. I'll go back to the zoning board and is there any other follow-up questions from the zoning board before I go out for public comment? Hearing none, I will go out to the public. Anybody here to speak on 152 Endicott Street? This is the old Denny's site.
Right here, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if you could identify yourself and go right ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Duggan, I'm at 41 Chase Street, Danvers. Before I begin with my comments, just you had mentioned, or you had asked a few minutes ago about large projects similar to this and someone mentioned Swing Away on Route 1. I believe that that was a Chapter 40B project and that's typically how these types of projects are inflicted upon the town, kind of against our will. First, I want to ask about the affordable component. Can someone tell me what the percentage is at this point?
The applicant has agreed to 12.5%.
Right, and I think that that was a number that was thrown out quite a while back. I still think that that's insufficient based on the type of relief that's being requested. It's sort of a quid pro quo. This project needs considerable relief. You heard at least eight variances. And we know that the voters of Danvers have said to their duly-elected representatives at town meeting that they do not allow this type of use in a commercial tree zone. And so it's, I'm not sure if the developer or the applicant has worked with the planning department or what the level of interaction was. But I think what the town is planning is to create another overlay district along Endicott Street. And I think that that's really a prerequisite for this type of development. And let's see. In terms of the Chalet Court, so that road, does that need to be accepted by the town? Or is that already, it's a paper street? So I think that the actual acceptance by the town in order to maintain the roadway, plow it, et cetera, that that, at that point or at this point today, that that town would not provide that type of service?
I don't have an answer for that. Maybe I can go to David Fields on that.
Sure, I guess if the question is, does the town does not have to accept the way? The way Chalet Court in particular has an interesting history, given that it was taken at one point by Mastot or former Mastot. But the town doesn't have to accept it. There could be some sort of association set up to maintain it. That being said, the town could accept it if it's built to specifications and town meeting votes to do so.
Yeah, that's fine. That's good. Thank you, Mr. Fields. So that's kind of a trivial point. Back to the affordable component. So 12.5% is not enough. I think 20% is something that should be the minimum for this project. And if they're not, the applicant's not willing to go to 20%, then I would respectfully request that you decline this application at this point. It's just onerous. The scale of the project is just out of the realm of what's around it. It'd just be something, I think, is the impact to the infrastructure and to the surrounding roadways will become overwhelmed. So that's all I have right now. Just one last comment. When this was at the Holton Richmond Middle School, I think it was back on November 30th of last year, I said that this was the right project, but it's at the wrong location and I still feel that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time.
Very good. Attorney McCann, I see you so kindly raised your hand, so you can go next.
Thank you very much. I think I said much of what I had planned to say earlier. I did have a question. Where are we with the number of units on this less than four-acre parcel? How many units are proposed?
As far as I know, we're at 192. Is that correct, Mr. Hewitt?
That is correct.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make one clarification because I think it's accurate. There is a current access into and out of this site. It's right in, right out. But it has provided the access to this site for many, many years. There is no requirement that that access be closed. I did ask the applicant whether they had been advised that they needed to close that access or couldn't use that access anymore. That isn't so. That access is still available. That being said, we are attempting to come to terms with something that will work using Chalet Court. And part of that requirement would be that it eventually does become accepted as a public way so that it is maintained as a street by the town for purposes of providing access. So we're not there yet. We're working towards it. It is complicated. There are a lot of parties involved. Hopefully, we can get there. And as I said before, I think it's very important that the final circulation pattern that's going to provide access for 192 units be before this board, that you see it, that you see how it's laid out and that the pedestrian access is there and that the layout is suitable for the proposed use for this use variance. And again, we're working on it with the developer so that the negative impacts of this project can be, it can be overcome through traffic mitigation measures and circulation. But we're not quite there yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McCann. Anyone else here to speak on 152 Endicott Street from the public? I am hearing none. Mr. Hewitt, based on the fact that you and the abutter are still in negotiations regarding Chalet Court and how that will be finalized, I don't see a need to go through deliberations with the zoning board. My recommendation is going to be that we continue this and we continue it to June 14th. Unless any other zoning board members would like to comment in front of that. And Mr. Hewitt, I guess I'd like to hear your feedback first. I see you put your hand up, Corinne, so hold on one second. Mr. Hewitt, you there?
Oh, I am. I was waiting for the.
I can get her a comment first if you'd like. Go ahead, Corinne.
I just would like Mr. Hewitt to comment on what Ms. McCann just stated. When this project first came in front of us, one of the issues that was raised was that, I want to say it was DOT was going to eliminate that right in, right out exit and entrance into that property. So if that's true, then that certainly is an issue that like we need an answer to and have a discussion about if they have multiple ways of getting in and out now.
We don't. That access that currently exists for the Denny's and the closed hotel that is now right in, right out was called a temporary access by DOT and was required that any future development that gets blocked off and that the taking that Mass DOT did on behalf of the town of Chalet Court, that became the legal access for this parcel. I believe the reason DOT wanted that access blocked off for future development was that it was too close to the highway entrance ramp. As Attorney McCann mentioned, it's a very complicated situation and we've been through it with our attorneys with a lot of detail. So we can provide more detail if needed, but that's the title history of the site.
Corinne, does that answer it for you?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. So Mr. Hewitt, go ahead, Becky.
So my question is, if we were to go ahead and approve this tonight, do we have an actual plan that we would be approving tonight that doesn't require an easement from the abutter?
I can answer. The plan that we submitted does not require an easement from the abutter. The plan that we're discussing currently with the abutter requires a small easement to create the larger entry and traffic island that I showed. And we also require some permission to do some of the landscaping work on their property that they've asked us to do. I had suggested in my cover that since we do have to go through a planning board process that we could continue that discussion with the planning board to find that plan once we're done with the abutter. But I certainly understand the importance of getting this intersection correct and we're committed to that as well.
Okay, so I'm not sure that I, I understand your comments, but what would be your preference? Would your preference be for us to vote on this and try to move it along tonight? Or would your preference be to try to continue working out the issues with Chalet Court?
I guess I would like to know how the board feels about our application, assuming we get to a reasonable access point. I would be fine if the board were to render a decision tonight and that the planning board would make sure that the access road was up to town standards and met the requirements of all parties. If the board does want to continue it to the next meeting and charges us and the abutter to come to an agreement before that hearing, I would also be open to that as long as I thought it would be a productive use of everyone's time.
Okay, thank you.
Definitive, but I kind of defer to whatever everyone thinks is the best course of action.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
One final question, obviously, on Chalet Court as well. So Chalet Court is a private way, is that correct? It's not owned by the town? Am I correct in saying that?
No, it is owned by the town. It was taken by Mass DOT and given to the town and the town accepted it as a right-of-way, but it's an undeveloped right-of-way.
Wow, so does the town maintains that road?
Well, the road.
Plow it, they plow it and everything else?
I believe that since the road does not exist, it's a paper road, that part of the road is covered by pavement from the abutting property and I believe that they maintain it.
Right, so what gives this, what gives this project the right to even use this?
We have title rights to use that Chalet Court.
Why didn't they use it all alone when it was the hotel then? Why did they use the in and out? Why did they use the in and out?
They were allowed to for that use at that time.
That makes no sense to me, but, okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, well. Well, we can either get a continuance and get a agreement on the pending Chalet Court intersection with the abutter or we can move forward with a vote. It's going to be... All right, Becky, go ahead.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping they're fairly close to coming up with an agreement. They seem to be working very hard at this. So I would move that we continue this two more weeks or till the 14th and see where we're at.
And I'm getting a second and a third from fellow board members. So I think, Mr. Hewitt, that's my answer. We're gonna, you're in agreement with the continuance and that would be on June 14th. So you basically have about a month to figure this out.
All right. I will accept that. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion from Becky Kilborn and I have a second from Ken Scholes. I'm going to go with a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kareen?
Yes.
And John Bounder is also a yes. Okay, we will see you all on June 14th.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, moving right along. Start with the regular items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next case is 10 Endicott Street. It's Zoned R1. Request for a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second dwelling, dwelling unit on a lot with 13,517 square feet, where 15,000 square feet is required in accordance with Table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws by Barrowby Realty LLC, docket 21-4935.
Thank you. Attorney McCann, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of Barrowby Realty LLC. With me tonight is Tom Barrowby. Also with me tonight is Stephen Livermore, who is the project architect. And we are requesting a small variance, lot area variance, for the property located at 10 Endicott Street in the R1 zoning district in order to allow a second unit to be attached to the existing single family that's located on the property. The R1 zoning district, as the board knows, allows a two-family residence on a lot with 15,000 square feet. This lot has 13,517 square feet, so we're about 1,400 square feet short. The applicant, Tom Barrowby, acquired this property last December 2020 and there is an existing home on the property that was built in 1880. It is located all the way to the left side of the property and it's in need of some rehabilitation. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can share my screen, I can put up the exist, can you see that or not yet?
Not yet, but please do.
Okay, let's see.
You're getting good at this.
I'm trying real hard. Let's see. I had it so easily the last time. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Okay, that's, I'm trying to put up the existing conditions plan. Just give me a moment. Let me know if that comes through.
Not yet.
Connecting. I'm wondering if David also, I would like to be able to do this.
Would you like me to attempt to put the site plan up?
Yeah, let me just try one more thing to share.
David, I'll get it ready if Nancy can't pull it up.
Let me just try one more time.
Don't worry, Attorney McCann will be in person in a month.
When is the, I can't wait. When's the next in-person meeting?
We're thinking it might happen June 14th.
Okay. All right. Georgia, if you have that, if you can pull that up for me, that would be great because I'm not having any luck getting this to connect. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, I'm not having luck with this tonight. Any luck with that?
Something's coming up now. That's you, Georgia?
Yeah, that's me. So Nancy, what I have up is the proposed site plan.
Okay. All right. So you do have in your package the existing conditions plan and that shows you that there is a single-family home built in 1880 that's located right in this area right here. The driveway comes in along this side lot line, right up against the lot line. And then there is a non-conforming garage located in the back. What we are proposing to do is to keep and rehabilitate the 1880 home and then construct a fully conforming addition to that home, which has a connector area and a garage for the existing single-family home, a garage for the new dwelling and then the new dwelling unit would be constructed next to that. And that's what you see here on the plan. And the benefits of doing this will allow us to remove that existing driveway that's right up against the easterly lot line and also remove the non-conforming garage that's located at the back of the site. And we will move the garage that will, the driveway, I should say, to the center of the lot and that will access the two single bay garages that are proposed. And that will provide much better visibility for access into and out of this site. The location of the current driveway, number one, it's right up against the lot line, but number two, the visibility is not good there. By bringing the driveway over to the center of the lot, the visibility is much better. And so we're improving that and creating a more of a yard up against the easterly abutter and providing some landscaped area there. Each of the units, the two units, will have three bedrooms each. So this will be family housing with an ample yard area. And each of the units are about 1,900 square feet. The first unit is 1,903 square feet. The second unit is 1,992 square feet. And they are, so they're modest size, but good family housing with nice yards will be available. And this allows us to rehabilitate the existing 1880 dwelling. So that will remain and be rehabbed. And then a fully conforming addition will be added to that existing dwelling to provide a new driveway access, the new garages in the front. Georgia, do you have the architecturals you can put up? If you move on to the elevation drawing, we did provide you with floor plans, but the elevation drawing. Keep going.
Can you see that?
Yep, I can. Can you go, that's the existing, can you go to the proposed? There we go. So that shows you, as you look at that elevation drawing, you have the existing 1880 dwelling on the left-hand side and then the door addition, which will connect the dwelling to the new garage. Then you have the second garage door, which will serve the new dwelling and then the new dwelling unit that is being proposed. So again, the addition that's proposed is fully conforming. We are eliminating the non-conforming garage. We are eliminating the driveway that's right up against the lot line and creating a yard area there. And we are doing all of that with just the requested lot area variance of 1,483 square feet because we are a little bit short on the lot area. But it will allow, if you grant that variance, it'll allow a use that's in keeping with other properties, residential properties in this zoning district, specifically right across the street. We have a couple of duplexes located right across the street as I provided in my application. So I would be happy to answer any questions. We do have Stephen Livermore, who is the project engineer here, sorry, project architect, who can answer any architectural questions that you may have. And hopefully, this is pretty straightforward and less complicated than the last hearing we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. We will start with Kareen.
Yes. Attorney McCann, where are the additional parking spaces going to be for the two units?
The parking spaces are located in the garage spaces as well as right in front of each of the garage spaces.
So there'll be, so there'll be two spaces, one indoor, one outdoor for each one of the units?
Yes.
And you also stated that this, the original building was constructed in the 1800s. Is there historical society approval necessary or not?
No, because we're not demolishing it. We're keeping it and rehabbing it.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kareen. Jeff Sauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney McCann, in the fact that you're adding a housing unit here to our housing stock, you have not mentioned making any kind of a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust. Could you speak a little bit about that?
There is not such a requirement under the zoning bylaw for this type of an application. We are only adding one, one new unit. So we hadn't anticipated doing that. The part of the motivation for adding a dwelling unit is also being able to restore the existing 1880 structure, which needs some significant rehabbing. So there's costs that's going to go into that and benefiting keeping that structure.
Okay. Well, I think you should anticipate from now on, anytime you come for a variance, we're going to ask you about the Affordable Housing Trust because we're right on the 10% border. And I'm sure Mr. Duggan will have something to say about that. And you need to consider that. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Ken Scholes.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Becky?
So I, that, let me just say that that street is like very busy there. I mean, I almost got killed trying to look at the site. So I just, we have 20 feet of driveway and I don't see how you can turn around without backing into the street, which would be impossible there. You know, I'm wondering if you wouldn't consider a parking space, either moving the new addition back or somehow creating a parking space on the other side of the garage so you drive through the garage or something. Like, well, similar to what they did on Sylvan Street with a carport versus a garage. I just don't see how, there has to be more parking there just because of the dangerous situation on that street. I wouldn't vote for it with this plan.
Okay. Let me, I will ask the architect to see if he has any insight into that or if that's something we want to take under advisement and look at.
Yeah. I mean, a parking space is supposedly nine by 18, so you only have 20 feet there. So once somebody's in the garage and somebody pulls up behind, how are they going to get out?
Well, it's certainly not an uncommon situation for residential dwellings to have a car in the garage and a space in front of the garage. I mean, that's pretty standard and that's what we're proposing here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Attorney McCann, I have to echo Becky's concerns and try to formulate in the way of a question, but I also site visited yesterday on a Sunday and took my life in my hands trying to get back out on Endicott Street. The existing driveway is a lot longer. However, no ability to turn around it. And I, you know, again, I'm not here to design the project, but this to me seems like a perfect opportunity for some type of circular driveway, if possible, because I just, I don't see how you get out on Endicott Street either. And so my question is, has that been looked at? Maybe instead of a garage, a carport with some type of circular driveway?
I'm going to ask Tom Barrowby is on this link also, if he has any comments about that. To my knowledge, a circular driveway had not been looked at, however it may have been, and I didn't know about that. But it's certainly something we can look at if the concern is access. Tom, did you have anything to add on that?
Well, we can certainly widen the hot top part of the project in the front to make a turnaround. So you could turn around and pull out forward onto Endicott Street without backing out onto it. So we could expand the hot top part in the front, still have plenty of yard in the back, you know, for kids and make like a, almost like a hammerhead where you back into it and then pull out.
Well, I just think, you know, knowing how busy that street can be, I just think that's something you guys ought to consider. There's a number of trees there. I take it those would all go away?
I think just one, the one large one right in the center. I'd like to try and keep them if we could, but just the one in the center.
Correct. And is there currently work going on on the existing building? I saw a porta potty and some other things. Is there any permits?
We have a permit. We've been doing some remodeling on the inside of the existing building.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. I'll just go back to the zoning board one more time. Anyone else, any additional follow-up questions? Hearing none, I will go out to the public for a comment and this is on 10 Endicott Street. And I'm not sure who you are. Joseph Anthony, it looks like.
That's correct, yes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. I have several points that we've kind of gotten together. We live in the condos right across the street. I'm looking at the lot right now, my office here, even though it looks like I'm out of help, Parker. So one of the things, I just want to understand the process here going forward in terms of the variance. Will we get, how do we get access to the site plans that were shown just moments ago?
Through this, through this hearing.
Okay. I mean, I took screenshots up and they were put up. I guess that, is that what you're saying we need to do?
Let me, let me interrupt you for a minute. David, is, are abutters able to see these applications online somehow?
We don't currently have them online, but we can send them to anybody, whoever emails or asks or anybody that wants them.
Okay. So, Mr. Joseph, you could get them, I'm sorry, Mr. Anthony, you could get these sent to you?
Great, okay.
Just request it through the planning department.
Okay, all right, I'll do that. So, let's see, number two. So the ownership of... of, all right, so it's gonna be one owner of these, both these properties?
Go ahead, Attorney McKinnon.
Yeah, no, these would be condos. Just like
Okay.
Yep.
A condo association?
Yes.
Okay. All right. What's this, do you have a schedule for the construction and the renovations?
Yeah, as Mr. Barabee indicated, that some renovations are already ongoing inside the existing home. And then as soon as, as we receive the necessary variance, we would begin construction pretty quickly thereafter.
And the duration might be a year?
Tom?
No, no, probably six to seven months.
Okay. And what are the, you mentioned the renovations to the existing structure, which I think personally probably use some renovations to the facade, the appearance. Are there any plans to the frontage?
Yep, the front, the front porch would be replaced. The rear, the side, the right side deck as you're facing it would be removed. The addition starts there. We've also started the, on the second floor, we have added a full bathroom. Remodeling, we would consist of remodeling the kitchen and the bathroom on the first floor, and an overall rehaul of like painting, flooring, you know, lighting.
Right.
Bring in every, bring in all the mechanicals to code.
Right. The same topic in terms of frontage, there's four pretty good-sized trees out there. And you said one is probably in jeopardy because of the entrance.
Yeah, we want to save the other trees. We were hoping, we were trying to keep the other trees.
That would be important to us. We just, well, we had another situation on the other side of our property with EPA, which didn't turn out too well. Then we all have, when I say all, we have a condo station of six different owners here on the the south side of the street. And we're kind of concerned about the traffic in and out. I know the former owner got hit, the collision, her car got hit because of the intensity of the traffic in both directions, actually. I mean, the tricky part is for the eastbound traffic backs up all the way up to one-twenty-eight in the afternoons. But the westbound traffic also does really come out off of Water Street and really accelerates. And we have heavy trucks going by there for deliveries quite a bit, too. So anyways, that's a concern that we have, but I think that's been discussed. And probably it's a good idea to have them not back out onto Endicott Street. Because I think that's how the former owner got hit. Anyways, just wanted to make that comment. So let's see, let me just check my list.
Yeah, the existing driveway now, the, if you pull in, you can only back out. You don't have a choice. And that's why it's so, that's why it's so dangerous. This, we can turn around in and pull out every time.
Okay, well, I think that's my list. So I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and look forward to hearing more.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anthony. Anyone else here to speak on ten Endicott Street?
Yep, Matthew Duggan.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, forty-one Chase Street. So just the fact that it requires a variance because of table two and the fifteen thousand square foot requirement, I think to justify the variance for the undersized lot and the fact that this is an investment property, I think it's reasonable to ask for a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust. We're in a precarious position right now based on the twenty-twenty census. It's likely that will fall below ten percent threshold because of the large number of housing dwelling units that are being constructed that are, that are not affordable. And so we're looking for any type of assistance that we can find. So I would, even if it was a small amount, token amount, just the fact that their developer or the applicant would be willing to help us out with this would be appreciated. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Attorney McKinnon, you here to respond to that?
I will certainly talk to my client about it. I think probably where this is going is we're going to look for a continuance so we can address the issue with regard to the driveway and having a turning area. And we can talk about that. The bylaw has specific provisions for when a contribution is required and the amounts associated with that. And this is not a situation that, that requires it, although we are asking for an area variance, not a use variance in this case. So I will talk to my client about it, but it's probably a situation, if this is going to be requested or required every time by the board, that it probably ought to be codified in the bylaw so that applicants are aware of what is being expected with regard to contributions.
Very good. Thank you. Any other additions? Is that it? Mr. Duggan?
I have my hand up, too. Oh, sorry.
All right, sorry, who are you?
Kevin McFarland. I'm in a butter, too. I live near Joe. I'm at nine Endicott Street.
Go ahead, Mr. McFarland.
I just want to say that, you know, I'm echoing some of the sentiments already been expressed. That is that, you know, I'd like to see the architectural drawings, but I think, you know, something in color that's a rendering of what would be the final product would be interesting. And yeah, my other thought, too, is that on the parking situation, if you have, because we have a situation similar on the other side, but we each have two additional spaces. If you have a car behind the garage and you're trying to get out, that, in particular times, either that's a parking lot out there or it's a raceway in the evenings. And so I think it's completely impractical to have that set up there. And, you know, I think, you know, just looking at the drawing, it's hard to tell exactly what it would look like, but, you know, I think unit one kind of being stuffed in there looks, I don't know how that would look, and that's why I'm interested in, you know, something that would show what the, what it would look like in the architectural drawing and also from above, et cetera, and also in color. You know, something, yeah, something that looks like a picture more or less, you know.
Yep.
Good design.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I see, oh, I'm sorry, do you have additional?
No, again, the trees are important to us, too. We had a situation, as Joe mentioned, across the Crane River, across Crane River from, and behind us, and they took out so many trees that it completely changed our environment here, you know, the wind, lights, and just the aesthetic, you know, the, it's not verdant back there anymore. It's just, you know, it doesn't look good. And maybe in twenty or thirty years, growth will come back, but, you know, I won't be here, probably.
Yeah, I think the applicant indicated they, they are gonna lose one tree, but they're gonna do everything in their power to keep the other ones.
Yeah, that tree is the most significant tree. I know which one they're talking about. It's enormous. And it's, I understand it's right in, right in the position that will make it difficult, but that's the one that gives all the shade and the beauty to that area. I, you know, it's my opinion. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And I see Chris Nice. I don't know if I said that right. I see you have a hand up. Go right ahead, Chris.
This is Tim. I'm with Chris, my wife. We live directly across the street at nine Endicott. And I mean, eleven Endicott. Wanted to echo the concerns around the traffic. We have to back out at times, and it's a nightmare. If you have two cars back to back, it's, it's, it's a recipe for disaster for whoever is gonna move in there, just passing along what, what we're experiencing already living here. And just one other thing. I understand we're gonna need construction vehicles to complete this whole project, but because we're directly across in the way that their driveway is set up, all these construction vehicles are actually going completely across Endicott Street and up into our driveway right now. And this is before major construction has started. So if, if we could be, find another solution for that, I know they do have that whole side yard that's completely empty right now where there's no construction. If the fence got pulled down, they could drive up on there, or, I don't know, a police detail or something. But having them come up into our, into our driveway across three lanes of traffic is not acceptable to us. Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good point to make. It's not anything really the board can control, but that's more of a something you can try and work out with the planning department, but also police enforcement as well. And I'm sure the applicant's gonna do what they can to not impact anybody. From what I can see, the project looks to be a good one. And I think the concerns have been raised quite a bit by not only neighbors, but the zoning board as well as to how to enter and exit this property. So with that said, is there any more comment from the public? Okay, hearing none, I will come back to the board for deliberations. I believe I started with you, Corinne.
I would want to wait to see what the plans are for the revised parking. I, I think that is a huge concern in this project.
Thank you, Corinne.
I would want a continuance.
Thank you, Corinne. Jeff Sauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will not vote for this. I think it's, the lot's too small and the the proposed addition is just too massive for the lot. They're coming for an area variance. But the people of Danvers have set the limit at fifteen thousand. And, you know, I can't see a legal reason that we can grant a variance that would hold up. So I will not vote for this.
Thank you, Jeff. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would vote for a continuance to see different parking plans.
Thank you, Ken. Becky?
Yes, I also want a different parking plan. I, not to design the project, but I think if that unit two gets pushed back a little bit and maybe create some parking in the, in the front. I, I don't love paved front yard, but there, something has to be done there. So I'd like to see a new plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. I, too, Attorney McKinnon, think that you guys can sharpen your pencils a little on this one. You know, site visits to me are vital, and my own experience, based on what the neighbors are telling me, says that this site has some uniqueness to it, especially given Endicott Street. And I really think that maybe a slightly smaller second unit to gain more circular type exit and entering into that site would be warranted here. So what would you like to do?
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments from the board members as well as the, as well as the neighbors. I've taken some notes, and Mr. Barabee has heard your comments as well as the project architect. So I think we would like to request a continuance to your next meeting and see what we can do to address the comments that we've heard.
They'll move the continuance to seven, six-fourteen.
I've got a motion by Becky, and I've got a second by Ken Scholz. I'll go with a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And John Bounder is also a yes. We will see you June fourteenth. I think you know we need plans in advance of that, the Tuesday prior. And to the public that are looking for copies of those plans, please contact the planning board department, and they will work with you to get those in your hands.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that possibly we do Robert Road before Needham?
You know, that's not a bad idea. You've been a chairman before, haven't you? Mr. Clark, if we could skip ahead to nineteen Robert Road and let those kind folks present, that might be in everyone's best interest.
Absolutely. Nineteen Robert Road, it's zoned R2. Request for a finding to add a sixteen-foot by forty-foot addition to an existing non-conforming dwelling in accordance with section three point eleven of the Danvers zoning bylaws by Brian and Rachel Novello, docket twenty-one dash four-nine-three-seven.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the board for hearing our request. As mentioned, we are in the process of, of looking to add on to the, the back of our home. And as, as it states, we are out of, we're non-conforming, because we're within the fifteen-foot setbacks. So we're looking to add a sixteen-by-forty addition, which would be a dining room and a fourth bedroom for the home. Single, single-story, full foundation. And we are requesting that the finding be granted if possible.
Okay, that's about it. I did visit your property today. Was that a cool rope swing I saw in the backyard?
Was.
I was tempted, but I probably wouldn't have taken my weight, but
You'd be surprised.
Okay, so it looks pretty straightforward here. You just want to add an addition. Okay, we'll start down there with you, Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your application says that you've talked to your neighbors. They're in favor of this? No problem?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Thank you, Becky. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site today. I spoke to the applicants, very nice people. I, they, he answered all my questions, so I have no questions.
Thank you. And Jeff?
Thank you. I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Corinne?
I, I have no questions either. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, so just to be clear, Brian, so this will have a full foundation?
That is the plan, yes.
And it's gonna be the same height as the existing building?
Correct.
And obviously you're staying within the same, so it'll be a straight shot from the front of the street on both the right and left side?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I have no questions from there. Anyone else from the public here to speak on nineteen Robert Road?
Yep, Matthew Duggan.
Go ahead, Mr. Duggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, forty-one Chase Street. Just a couple of quick questions. First, so this is a significant increase in the amount of impervious. Will there be a stormwater plan in terms of controlling the runoff from this site?
That's a good question, sir. And I'm gonna, William Fallon from Fallon Builders is on the call as well, so I'm, I'm gonna push this one over to him. He'll be able to probably better answer it than myself.
We can do, we can do a runoff plan if, if that is needed by the board when we do the full design phase.
Mr. Fallon, you're the contractor on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The reason I ask is, when I'm looking at the aerial view, on the right side of nineteen Robert Road, close to seventeen, there's some type of drainage. I don't know if it's a ditch or just some type of indentation. Is, so is there, is there a water problem today coming from the, the north side of the property where it abuts the Clark Farm? Is there, it's, you know, it's kind of an elevated lot towards the back. Is there some type of water issue going on there?
Not that we're aware of. Since we've been in the home, there, there's never been any issues. I believe what you're referring to has been there for quite some time, and I believe that's from seventeen. I've spoken to them about the addition, and they're in favor of it.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the reason that this applicant is before the board is because of the left side setback?
That is correct. They currently don't need it.
Right. And I think the seventeen is very similar. So so when you said that the addition is going to be in line with the existing structure, so the new addition will also be inside the required setback?
It's inside the required setback, but it's actually further setback than the front of the home. Front of the home is at eight point six. This addition would be at eleven point one and twelve point eight.
I see.
Here's the plan here. It's being put up.
Yep, okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you. I'm also.
Thank you. Any other additional questions from the public on nineteen Robert Road? Hearing none, I will come back to the board. Becky Kilborn.
I would vote for this. I visited the site over the weekend and I would vote for this. Thank you.
Ken Schultz?
I would vote for this. I think it looks good.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff?
I will vote for this.
And Corinne?
I will vote for this.
I will too vote for this, although I still wish I went on the rope swing.
You're welcome anytime.
Maybe half the project's done. Could I get a motion, please?
I move that the sixteen by forty addition, as shown on the plans and elevation submitted by the applicant, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I've got a motion and a second by Jeff Sauer. I'll go with a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And John Bounder is also a yes. Good luck, folks. See the planning department.
Wait a minute, wait. I move to grant the finding in accordance with section three point one one of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the sixteen by forty addition, as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists. There we go.
The two part finding, and we have a second by Jeff Sauer. Go with a roll call vote again. Becky?
Yes.
Jeff? Sorry, Ken Schultz?
Yes.
Jeff Sauer?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And John Bounder is also a yes. Good luck, folks, and see the planning department and good luck with the project.
Thank you also very much. Take care.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, our final case of the night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fifty one Needham Road, this is zone C three. Request for a use variance to allow multifamily residential use and a finding to allow alter alteration of the existing nonconforming parking and landscaping setbacks. In accordance with table three and section three of the Danvers zoning bylaws made by J H R Development LLC, docket twenty one dash four nine three six.
And who is here to present on this project?
Hi, I am Mr. Chairman. This is Nancy McCann. Once again, I'm here representing J H R Development LLC, the developer for this project located at fifty one Needham Road. And it is in the C three zoning district. With me tonight is Hillary Rockett, who is the applicant's principal. Also with me tonight is Michael Wang, the project architect, and Matt Costa from Fields Associates as the project engineer. And this board may recall this project. We presented to you initially back last September. For a multifamily development at fifty one Needham Road in the location of the former Hollywood Hits movie theater. And we met with the board for a couple of meetings. And in December, we withdrew the application without prejudice to give us some time to see if we could address the board's comments with regard to some of the building aspects. And we have used that time and I I think we have attempted and I think we've done a pretty good job of meeting the and addressing the comments that that the board had back last fall. We have addressed the building massing. We have addressed the building height. We have proposed reducing and taking off an entire story, lowering the building from four stories down to three stories. And we have addressed the visibility from Route one twenty eight, which was a concern of some of the the board members. And we have some graphics to show you tonight with regard to that. And the affordable component, we have also looked at that. And again, this is a use variance that does not require an affordable component under the terms of the bylaw. However, we had always proposed having an affordable component with this project. And we have increased that and found that we could still present to you a viable project with fifteen percent affordable component for this development. Before we get to the graphics, and I do have screen sharing that's going to be done by others, so hopefully it will work. I wanted to go back since we really are starting this application anew and cover the the components of the application. You do have, I believe, a very complete application package before you. And we think that this is an exciting opportunity to revitalize an area of this twenty four acre site that has been vacant for a long time. There is an existing building on this site that is falling into and has fallen into significant disrepair. We have an area of this site that is almost completely paved. This project site is almost four and a half acres. And we're proposing one hundred and thirty residential units on four and a half acres. Almost the entirety of the site currently is paved or impervious. And there is little, if any, stormwater management and treatment going on on that existing site. So we think that this is a good opportunity to redevelop that area. The entire site is is about twenty four, twenty four and a half acres. And we have big box retail. We have a boat brokerage. We have general and professional offices. We have medical offices. And previously, the we have childcare, we have a gas station, all happening on that on the existing site. And we have this about four and a half acres, four point three acre section that has just really fallen into disrepair. The C three zoning district does permit shopping centers. This particular site doesn't meet the definition of a shopping center under the zoning bylaw as it's defined. However, it does have all of the components that we're looking for and we're seeing in the more modern shopping center layouts. All of the components with the exception of residential. And that's what we're proposing to add to this to this site is a residential component. To that will the residents there will support and service the businesses that are there and vice versa. And that really is the new model for for shopping centers is to have this mix of commercial and office and retail and residential. As to really make shopping centers be a true, a true destination and a place where our folks want to live. We had talked about the Lynnfield Marketplace being the example that comes up and comes to mind frequently. This particular site is also a good location for residential as it relates to the services in the area. And it's on a the Route one twenty eight commuter corridor. But this section of the site is not good for the typical C three zoning uses of retail uses because it has no visibility for its entrance. And it is difficult to to find and to have a tenant in the residential, sorry, in the retail marketplace that wants to be located in an area that's that's very difficult to find. But again, residential fits into that that niche for this particular site. This is an irregularly shaped twenty four and a half acre site as we as we've discussed previously. And it really is is very well suited for this use. We are proposing to remove the twenty five thousand square foot movie theater building that's located on the site now that again has been vacant for a number of years and is is falling into disrepair. And replace that with the new multifamily buildings that you saw on and you see on your on your plan set. One hundred and thirty new residential apartments are proposed, made up of studios, one bedrooms and two bedroom units. Thirty six studios, fifty one bedroom and forty four two bedroom units. The application does provide you with the square footage of those units. They are small units, modestly sized. And really, the the population that we're looking and anticipate attracting here are young professionals, some empty nesters, some singles and and couples, that sort of a demographic. That might also be attracted to the Route one twenty eight corridor for commuting purposes. We're replacing what can only be described as a sea of pavement out there, as I said before. Almost the entire area is paved with without any treatment. And we are reducing the amount of impervious surface on this area by nineteen percent. And we're adding stormwater management treatment. So those are two very big bonuses for for the site generally. The buildings, as proposed, are fully conforming to the setback requirements. And again, we have proposed, in order to address the concerns that we heard from the board, we are proposing to reduce the height of the buildings from what had previously been presented of four stories down to three stories. And as I mentioned, the affordable component of fifteen percent, which would provide twenty new affordable units. I think what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is to ask Matt Costa to put up the existing and proposed site plan and speak to that briefly. And then I think the more important purposes of addressing the comments that the board had will be to show you the graphics that we have of both the site plan as well as as the building renderings themselves.
Sure, go ahead.
Mike, are you there?
I think Matt's, is Matt sharing his screen?
Sorry, Matt.
Sure, yes, I can share just a moment.
Oh.
Back to the beginning.
Are you are you sharing my presentation?
I'll say it might be easier for you to just speak to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do that, Matt, and and you can be there to answer questions if that's the easiest. Whatever you prefer. All right, why don't you stop sharing and let me let me share mine in PowerPoint format.
What I was going to share, please start with identifying yourself, please.
Sharing process here. Are you seeing my screen now? I guess you are.
I've only got a blank.
Is that better?
I'm not seeing it, but our other board member is seeing it.
I'm sharing my content here.
No, I see I see a black screen.
Yeah, it's a black screen.
Okay, how about that?
There we go.
So, okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. I apologize for the false start there. My name is Michael Wang and I'm an architect and a planner with Form and Place. And I've I presented in front of you back in September as well as in December, as Nancy mentioned. So, you know, this graphic obviously is depicting the lease area of four, just over four acres in the northern sector of what of the twenty four acre plus site, which is outlined, it's outlined in the red dashed line. And as you can see, as Attorney McCann mentioned, the access off of Endicott Street to the south here is quite a ways along Hutcheson Drive to the back of the site. So it is a challenging site from a retail perspective. So let me, since we're all intimately familiar with the site, let me just give you a very quick overview of the evolution of of the project here, just with a couple of quick slides. This is the original rendering of the original proposal that we put in front of you in December of last year. It's a hundred and forty unit, four story design. The architectural vernacular of it was was carefully crafted, you know, essentially to follow the character based zoning that you find in in your downtown area. And so then we came back, and this is again, the September render. We came back in in December with trying to respond to comments about the massing of the two buildings here. And you can see, this is the version that we presented in December. So I'll go back and forth just so you can see, essentially, we're reducing the footprint of the two buildings and beginning to carve away at the upper level. You can see these terraces exposed, making these sections of the building down to three stories and trying to address the concerns about the massing of the buildings. And again, allowing more open space to occur due to the decrease in the footprints. I think there was still some concern about the four story volume and how it was being seen from the one twenty eight quarter. This was the plan previously with the four story buildings, two sort of L shaped buildings around a green. And here is the plan that we are presenting to you today, which is now more of a completed courtyard, if you will. But it is a three story, two three story buildings that still both have sixty five units. Slight increase in the footprint, but still, as Nancy mentioned, the the all the the lot coverage issues and the impervious and all those things are notable improvements from the existing condition. So this three story version of the plan, again, I'm not going to spend time on this graphic, but it's here if anybody has any particular questions. But the unit mix is essentially the same as it was previously and targeting the particular demographics that Attorney McCann mentioned. So here is a couple of elevations of the three story version of it. Again, trying to to maintain that sort of mansard, traditional New England architectural vernacular. Removing one floor from the whole building now, so we now have three story buildings. And here are the other two elevations for the record. I think probably most telling are the are the renderings. This is the current rendering from the corner of the building, showing an entrance off to the right. This is what it was previously, the four story building as compared with what we're proposing today. So you can see the 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 volume metrics of the building are considerably lower. And sort of moving around, we've we've tried to maintain the amenities, the qualities of the interior courtyard space. So you can see with the landscaping and the green and other amenities that are to be shared by the residents there that it's still quite a nice inward looking space. And from the perimeter of the of the project as well, looking into the courtyard now, you can see the the project has a nice presence around its perimeter as well. I think probably the most important issue that we were asked to address was what are the sight lines like from the highway? What's the presence of the of the building as you're driving on one twenty eight? And I think the actual, the telling graphic is this small site section that's actually in the middle of this sheet. As you look and you can see the two cars traveling northbound on Route one twenty eight off to the left here where my cursor is. What we're proposing is to put a nine foot high fence on top of a five foot high landscape berm. And with that sort of buffer, if you will, between the highway and what is now a three story project, you can see the sight lines from the car do not allow you to see the main roof of the building, even the building that's closest to one twenty eight. So if you were to, now I'm going to blow up the rendering that's on the top there. This was the the four story version where you can see the top level of the building is projecting above the fence from that sight line. And now with the building lowered, the main floors, only a few architectural features may poke up a little bit. But in general, it's it's quite a visual improvement. So I'm happy to stop there and answer any questions you may have. But I think essentially, we're trying to address the massing and bulk concerns that you had. So that's that's where we are today.
Thank you for the new plan. I'm, I was very impressed, just to start off, and I can't help but look at the contrast between this project and the one across the street in that the size of the sites are the same, this one actually a little larger, and you're only asking for a hundred and thirty units, so, or apartments. Do you need any kind of approvals to to put that fencing along the 128 Highway Corridor?
I believe the answer to that is no, it will be put on our property, but Michael, did you want to, was there anything else that you wanted to add to that?
No, I mean, it definitely is shown on the plan as being within our the property line, so I don't think there's any particular, yeah.
Okay, okay. And the access will be past BJ's the same way we had it before, is that correct?
That's that's correct, yes, and using that signalized intersection, that's the only entrance into the site, and of course, it would have to go through site plan approval, of course, but yes, this access is the same as previously presented.
Okay, and the the affordable component, we, was it at fifteen last time? I think it moved around, if I remember.
It did. We had initially proposed, because we had always proposed an affordable component, we had proposed ten percent, and we went twelve and a half, and at the last meeting, we were asked about going any higher, and now we've been able to look at the numbers, and can we do that, and we can permanently commit to a fifteen percent affordable, which would be twenty units.
That's very generous. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Ken Scholz.
Thank you, Becky. You answered, you asked all my questions, so I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff Sour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney McCann, what's the ratio of parking spaces to bedrooms in the present design?
Mike, do you, can I ask you, Michael, to give me that?
Yeah, so there are a hundred and thirty units, and we're currently proposing that it would be two hundred and sixty spaces required, and this current site plan actually is showing two hundred and sixty-three, so we're slightly over that, but we're doing the two-per-unit requirement.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff. Karen, Kareem.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You said two hundred and sixty-three parking spots. Can you tell me how many bedrooms?
Well, I probably can do that math for you. There are fifty-one bedrooms, and there are forty-four two-bedrooms, so that's eighty-eight, and fifty is one thirty-eight, and then there are thirty-six studios, so if you count those, I guess as ones, one thirty-eight, one seventy-four?
Hundred and seventy-four bedrooms. And how is guest parking handled?
I think that we have more parking spaces than, then I suspect that we need having two parking spaces per unit, particularly where we're showing two parking spaces even for the studios, and I think we have a little over two parking spaces per unit. I would anticipate on this project that when the planning board reviews the parking requirement, because we are showing two parking spaces per unit, even for studios and one bedrooms, we may discuss whether we need as many as we're showing, and could we even add a bit more landscaping, and we'll get into that, I think, with the with the planning board. Right now, we're showing the two, two parking spaces per unit, which meets the bylaw requirement, and we're a little over.
Very good, thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, I will go out to the public for questions or comments. Go ahead, Mr. Duggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, 41 Chase Street, so just want to commend the applicant for going back and and redesigning this project. It's a considerable improvement, especially reducing that fourth floor. The mass is, it seemed overwhelming with the initial application, so thank you for that. I think that, and also for the, to bumping up the affordable housing to fifteen percent, that's that's generous, and want to thank you for that. I think if the town had a character-based overlay for this area, that this is the type of development I think that we would likely see built, so I don't really have a problem with that. I did want to just speak to the comment about the parking. It doesn't seem to be any, really, any play area in on the site is, you know, there obviously there's going to be children there, and because it is adjacent to that superfund site, my my fear is that somehow the children will go into the woods there and use that as a play area, and that's not really a desirable activity to see them do that. So if there was a slight reduction in parking, perhaps a small play area with maybe a jungle gym or something along those lines could be added. You know, that's the problem with some of these sites, they're isolated from, you know, typical residential areas, so, but just again, just I think it's quite an improvement, and I think for that site, I think I don't think we're going to really see anything better than what this is in terms of residential. I know that there was talk about using it, continuing to use it as a commercial area for either storage of vehicles, that kind of thing, but I think this this application, I think, is, I think it meets the requirements that the planning department would be looking for. At least that's my thought. Thank you. All set.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're muted.
I am, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Any additional comments from the public?
Yes, sir. Matthew Byrne, precinct five.
Go ahead, Matthew.
As a business owner who's actually owned a business on this parcel for the last eight years and who's intimately familiar with the goings-on day-to-day in this property in this whole area, I find the project to be completely unsuitable in the area. We have a boat dealership next door, we have a gas station, we have BJ's, we have a contractor's yard, all with off-hours, all with tractor-trailer deliveries, varying levels of traffic. There's already, you know, daily near misses at the crosswalks for BJ's. BJ's, for those unfamiliar, operates a overnight delivery and receiving team, so the tractor-trailers are in and out throughout the night, loading, unloading, idling. And myself, my business, we do operate some late evenings if necessary, as well as some contractors down with us. And for those who saw swinging away golf get developed and start to hear the phone calls from the neighbors complaining about the the some of the businesses that operated abutting them, I I just don't think this is going to be a suitable location. I think it's going to lead to conflict between the residents and existing commercial users in the area, as well as the fact that commercial space is disappearing at an incredible rate. It's incredibly hard to find the type of space that's up there available to people already. I work in a field where I deal with a lot of contractors, landscapers, utility companies. The biggest gripe that they have is that they cannot find commercial industrial space to rent for their operations, and I think by developing a site into a residential site, once it's gone, it's gone. It's never going to come back to commercial. We're losing a valuable parcel that could be well-suited for another use, but that's not the topic here. The topic is the is the residences, and I, you know, one comparison was made to Linfield Marketplace. If you've ever been in Hutchinson Drive, you know this is not anything like Linfield Marketplace, and I don't care if you put the nicest building in the cornerback there, it's not going to be, whether that be the accessibility, whether that be the maintenance of the property around it, the type of operations. You'd never see a gas station in Linfield Marketplace, but if you rent an apartment in this building, you're going to see it out your door every day. You've got a boatyard on one side where they're grinding and painting, storing, you've got a gas station on one side, you've got a cemetery, and then an EPA superfund site on one side, and you've got, you know, a mixed-use next door. You know, it's it's just, it does not seem very conducive at all to a residential area. I know, you know, when I ring my daughter up to work with me, if I have to watch her for half a day or something while my wife's not around, I don't let her run out and play around the yard. This is not a place I would want kids running around. It's just, it's it's not residential suited, nothing about the property is. It would be much better served as a contractor's yard, lay-down space, truck stop, you know. And like I said, I've been there for eight years, seven days a week, just about, and this is absolutely not a place I would want to live or have anybody living for that matter, because I I see, I foresee a lot of conflict in the future with the neighbors when people start complaining about the noise of the visuals of what's going on around them that's been there forever and is operating within their legal rights as a commercial zone. I just, you know, if the townspeople wanted it to be residential, anything would be a residential ultimately. That's not the town's will, so I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to some of that?
Sure.
The site that we're talking about, the four and point three acres is down next to the highway, and that area has been vacant for almost seven years. There's been a lot of different folks look at that and reject it for various commercial uses, and it just continues to to deteriorate, and we think that this development is an excellent complement to the other uses, the office uses, the medical uses, the retail uses that are located in in this immediate area, both for opportunities for employment for the residences as well as for services, and making this into a contractor's yard is certainly not going to benefit the neighborhood or or the town. We think this is an improvement for the town with a with a nice residential development, with some nice landscaping. I did want to get back to the children. The units are studios, one bedrooms, and and two-bedroom units. Those will not have children, but for, I would say, some of the affordable units that are two bedrooms, we might have some some children. And if you look on your plan, you do see a nice green that that we've spent a lot of time, and and Michael has certainly spent a lot of time designing that area, that will be a nice green area, and as Mr. Bonner said, when we get to planning board, maybe we can, or Mr. Duggan said, as we get to planning board, maybe there's an opportunity for some additional outdoor area, if that's what the planning board would like us to to consider. But it's this, we think, quite honestly, just the opposite of what some of the comments were. We think this is an improvement to the area that that is available and needed, and and will do very well here and will support the businesses that are that are located there.
Thank you, Attorney McCann. Any additional public comment on 51 Needham Road? I'm hearing none. I will come back to the board, and we will deliberate, and I believe I started with you, Becky.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just kind of made a list of my comments here. I I like the look of the buildings. I think they're better looking than the previous four-story building, so I like that it's only three stories. I'm happy with the fifteen percent affordable component. I like the 128 screening. I think that will be tremendous for the property, and I like the layout with the smaller units and the, I think that the comments that have been made that there will be few children is true, because there are very few two-bedroom units, and the fact that there's adequate parking is is a plus. We're getting the concern about losing commercial space. I think Mr. McCann's comments are right on. This property's been vacant for years, and if someone really thought this was a desirable commercial space, they would have taken advantage of it by now, and I appreciate that we're not being asked for a whole list of variances. We are only being asked for a use variance, and I think it'll fit in here. It's a much better plan than the one we originally saw, and I'll vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Ken Scholz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what Becky said. You know, Mr. Byrne says he doesn't think people would desire to live there, and maybe not. I wouldn't want to live there, but like my grandmother used to say, there's a butt for every saddle. People will live there, so I think the site now looks good with the three stories. I like that. I don't like the Hutchinson Drive access. I think that stinks, but I guess I can live with it. I don't have to drive up and down it, so I would vote for this project.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff Sour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I too applaud the applicant for withdrawing and taking the time to come up with something that was more palatable to the board. I too didn't like the height or the bulk of the building. I don't like use variances in general. I think they're a bad idea, and if the people of the town wanted this to be residential, they'd vote on it, but I can see the utility of taking a piece of property that's seven years without a, you know, without any anything going on and putting good use to it. So I will vote for this. As as with Ken, I don't like the Hutchinson Drive aspect, but I think it's a good building, and I think it'll be an asset to the town.
Thank you, Jeff. Kareem.
I've always been extremely concerned about the superfund site next door, and I agree with the commercial butter, Mr. Byrne. I do not think that this project is suitable for this specific piece of land, and because of that, I would vote no.
Thank you, Kareem. There is a lot of changes that I see on this project that I I do see as going in the right direction. However, as I stated in the fall, I I don't see this. I I see this as commercial land that has, really does not make sense to me to be residential use. I think we have Endicott Street, which is already a problem, has been well documented tonight with three different applications, and I don't see how adding a hundred and thirty apartments in an already construct, you know, I don't even know the best word to say for that area. I just see it as a nightmare, and we're just throwing gasoline on a fire. I think there's a reason the town, you know, bylaws state that commercial land is for commercial use, and for those reasons alone, I will not vote for this. So what would you like to do, Ms. McCann? in an already construct, you know, I don't even know the best word to say for that area. I just see it as a nightmare, and we're just throwing gasoline on a fire. I think there's a reason the town, you know, bylaws state that commercial land is for commercial use, and for those reasons alone, I will not vote for this. So what would you like to do, Ms. McCann?
Can I respond to just one thing that you, that you've just said? Because I think the last time we were here, in fairness to the applicant, I didn't hear comments from you with regard to traffic concerns. I heard comments regarding massing and the affordable component and that sort of thing, but we did submit as part of this application package, which most applicants don't, but we did because we thought it was appropriate. We submitted to you a traffic study, and this proposal decreases the vehicle trips on a daily basis to this site over what was historically there by 1,200 vehicle trips a day on, on a weekday, and by almost 1,800 vehicle trips on a Saturday. That's a decrease, that's a significant decrease that's afforded by this residential development as opposed to the actual numbers from a prior entertainment commercial development that was there, the movie theater. Those are real numbers, and they do go to your comment with regard to traffic. We do have a signalized intersection at Hutchinson Drive that works very well. There are no level-of-service issues with regard to that intersection or the timing of that light. And I think any commercial development that could go in here, I just don't see it, having been, quite honestly, involved over the last seven years with quite a number of commercial tenants who have looked at this space and who have said, no, it doesn't work for commercial uses that are permitted. And this residential use, I think, is an excellent reuse. I think it goes with the uses that are already there to propose more contractor yards and more commercial vehicles coming down Hutchinson Drive and coming down Endicott Street to come to this site. That doesn't seem to make sense, particularly as it applies to your concerns with regard to traffic. So what's being proposed is a significant reduction on a daily basis to the, the traffic and the vehicle trips of what had been going on there previously for the movie theater. And I, I would ask you to consider that and to consider the, the way the applicant has gone about this, to listen to the comments that you've made, and to address those comments very significantly, and to come up with apartments that are studios and one bedrooms and two bedrooms that are small. There is a market for these units. There is a population that this housing will serve, and it's an appropriate location, being on the commuter route, and having the services both for the residents as well as employment opportunities for the residents. This is a good site for this particular use, and I think we've addressed the board's comments as you have expressed them, and we did that very thoughtfully, and, and in good faith to bring you a project that we think really addresses those concerns and, and the needs of the town with the, with going above the expectation, I think, on the affordable component. So I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you reconsider some of those comments.
Thank you. So I, I mean, I just want to clarify, I think I've been very consistent from the get-go on this. My, my number one concern here is we're trying to put residential in a commercial area. My, my traffic concerns, and I, I don't disagree with you, that a, a site such as, you know, any other commercial use could generate more traffic in that area, but just, just Sunday, visiting there without anything on that site, it's already a nightmare. And so I want to just be clear that my, my traffic concerns, although I think are very real, are secondary. I believe this project is just not the right location in the town. I think it's a good design, I think it's a good-looking project. I just don't agree with putting residential in commercial. If the town of Danvers wants to change its bylaws and give this board more latitude to accept something of this nature in all commercial zones, well, I, I would, you know, go with that. But at this point, I don't feel it's the right use, and I'll go back to Conifer Hill, and I didn't vote on swing-away because I wasn't there, but I was against that project as well because of the same reasons. So I think I've been pretty consistent, and I, I don't want to discredit any work that's been done by your, you or your team here, but I, I just don't feel it's the right fit for a commercial area. And that is my vote, and I am going to stick with it.
Then I guess that would, I guess I didn't hear that earlier this evening when you had a similar project that was far more dense, also in this zoning district.
We haven't, we didn't deliberate on that project.
No, I know, I'm, I know. I'm just making that comment since I have an abutting concern to that. So since we are in a forum that does not allow me to talk to my client very directly, I'm going to ask for a continuance to your next meeting so that we can consider what comments you have made and see how we'll shake out a little bit, but again, if, if my client were sitting next to me and I could poke him and say, what do you think? That would be something else. But in this remote forum, I'm going to ask for a continuance, please, to your next meeting.
Okay, could I get a motion, please? And that would be June 14th. I have a motion, and I have a second. I think Ken beat you to it, Jeff. You've been pretty quick tonight, though. I'll go with a roll call vote, Becky?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff Sauer?
Yes.
Karine?
Yes.
And John Bonner is also a yes. Okay, we will see you on June 14th.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Unless there's any other business, David or Georgia, I think we will sign off for the evening.
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like some clarification on the affordable housing, the 2020 census. I'm hearing conflicting information, and I don't know if David and Georgia would like to answer that now or give us some further feedback, but I've heard that we are, have exceeded the 10%, and then I hear others, people saying no.
I have that same question, Becky, so thank you for bringing it up.
I guess, would you like me to, with regard to rumors about slipping below, I, I think until we see the numbers, we don't really know. I, I would say it's, it's a, it's a concern. We've never really been that high above 10%, even when we've been above, so it's always an ongoing concern. I know it doesn't seem like we add many units to the denominator, but there's always little nibbles happening around that cumulatively do add up to an increase in the, the denominator in that equation. So I guess...
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, were you, were you asking specifically, how, do I have numbers yet, or?
Well, I thought that that was already certified, in that we were, the 2020 census was certified, and that we are above the 10% for 10 more years.
That could be, I'd have to check.
Okay, so, so you could give us an answer on that? Because we keep, you know, that's what I heard about six months ago, I heard that, so...
I think it's important, David, because, you know, we want to be able to deal factually with specialty applications that come before us, and I think it's important to know where we stand as a town.
Sure, so I can do a couple things. I can email the board in the interim between now and next meeting after I look, or do you want to just...
I think that would be fine.
Okay, I'll send that.
That'd be good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yep.
I remember going to a planning board meeting or a presentation, it was at the, it was at the, the multipurpose room at the middle school, and a presentation was presented that, at that time, they said something like, there are 500 houses in the downtown Danvers Res One area that had enough property to convert to multifamily.
I think it was 480, yeah, it was...
Something like that. Yeah. And so that's an easy way to nibble away at our 10%. So, you know, every time someone comes to us and says, well, it's only one or two or three units, and there's nothing in the bylaw to, that requires us to make a donation to the Affordable Housing Trust. And my argument is, if they're here for a variance, you know, we're horse trading, and it's perfectly legitimate for us to ask everybody, every unit that comes up, we should ask them for an Affordable Housing component.
Okay, I just want Jeff to understand that this is only, that number is set only every 10 years. It doesn't go up and down every year, every six months.
That's correct, but...
It'll be set for 2020, and then it won't be until 2030, so...
That's correct, but, but, but if you want to hit 2030, all the years between 2020 and 2030, we better be making 10%, you know, under the line.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, just a quick update for, for discussion with Jeff. The Affordable Housing Trust has asked me specifically to look at the current bylaw. So they want to see if there's any changes to be made, or if there's anything we can do to address projects.
Well, it's just, it's just that, that, when we went to that meeting and they said that 480 number, that's a shocking number of multifamily conversions that could happen, and that would easily put us, you know, below the 10% if we let every single one of those one and two units go by without compensating for it in the Affordable Housing Trust.
We should let David do the research, because we're on, we're on public TV right now, so let David do the research, and, you know...
But I think if, if that's something that we can bring to town meeting, we probably should address that.
Okay.
Okay, board members, anything else before, for the planning department before we sign off for the evening? Thank you all. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second. And a second by Ken, a roll call vote, Becky?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Karine?
Yes.
And John is also a yes. Good night all, good job.